Thank you. Ms. Carrillo, I want to call this meeting to order, but before I call this meeting to order, I want to check for quorum.
Yes, Mayor. Dr. Armando Ocaña.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega. Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega.
Here.
Councilman Ruben Plata.
Here.
Councilwoman Nori Garza. Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we've got three council members, two council members plus yourself in person, and we have Mayor Pro Tem Ortega on Zoom, so we've got a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. I will call this meeting to order, and I will identify the agenda item, an invocation, and pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to lead us in those items.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everyone for being here this afternoon. If I ask everyone to please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us clear direction on how to show our appreciation by love and serving our neighbors. On this Thanksgiving Day, may we be especially thankful for each other, for family and friends who enrich our lives in wonderful ways, and also the many blessings that we have received. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I will call for the presentations, and the first one is, I'm going to ask Ms. Enriquez, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, we are planning for our annual health fair. This will be the 26th year that we have put on a community health fair for our residents. We will have complimentary flu shots. We will also have blood work available, and that is done by appointment only. A fasting is required. Anyone interested in a complimentary blood work can set an appointment by calling the chamber at 585-2727. Reminder, the health fair is going to be a two-day event from December 3rd and the 4th. We do have vendor booths available. We have about six left. And I just want to remind everyone that the chamber, the lobby, is closing for the holiday season from Wednesday through Friday. However, we will still be taking calls for appointments for the health fair on Wednesday and Friday during business hours, and we've shared the numbers online, and we will also be informing our members and our social media followers. On the 9th and the 10th, we do have two educational webinars. We do have two virtual ribbon-cutting events next month. I have reached out to the office of the city manager to see what that looks like and for safety of everyone. Some more details on that. We do have our annual member appreciation drive-through holiday event happening at the chamber on the 10th, and we're going to have about four stations with different treats, so we do invite our chamber members to come on and join us, just drive by the chamber. We're going to have, like I said, four different areas that they can pick up their treats. We've also, we will be mailing out tomorrow the appreciation gifts for our membership. So, everyone should be getting their complimentary gift. It's a calendar for 2021, and it should be arriving to their offices this week or next week. And that is all that I have for today, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. I do want to acknowledge your letter that was submitted to my office dated November 19, 2020.
Yes.
On these activities that you have planned, and they're thoroughly planned under the CDC guidelines. You know, the letter is addressed to the mayor and the city council, and that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up. And you're requesting to have the activity on the 26th, on your 26th Annual Mission Community Health and Wellness, which is December 3rd and 4th, which you described, and your 2021 Winter Texan Drive-In Concert on February 11th to 2021. The Office of the Mayor is recommending approval of this letter as long as you follow the CDC guidelines, and it is one of the requirements. As you stated in the letter that you have already committed to that, therefore, I'm going to ask the council for their blessing on this letter. Council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and my understanding is 4-0, Ms. Carrillo, so thank you, Ms. Enriquez, so you can let your board know that you can go forward with these two activities that you have requested.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Any questions by the council directly to the President of the Greater Chamber of Commerce?
No questions.
No questions? No questions, Ms. Ortega? Any response from Ms. Ortega?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Ms. Enriquez, thank you for your report, and we'll move right along.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I'll call for presentation, agenda item number two, the departmental reports. Mr. Perez, if you all, any of the council members, this is the time to be able to ask any direct question to the departments as submitted in writing, and we'll ask Mr. Perez to answer any other questions. If not, he can always ask assistance from his department. Council, you have the floor.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the department's report.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the departmental reports as presented in writing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign. Motion carries, and the departmental reports have been approved 4-0. And I will call for citizen participation, and I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo to assist me in this matter. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor. We've had Mr. Mike Rhodes sign up for agenda item number 19.
Let me call agenda item number 19, and Mr. Rhodes, you are recognized from the chair, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to try to share my screen. Is that possible?
Is that possible?
I've done that. Anyway, I don't have to have it shared. You guys have some packets in front of you. I appreciate having the time today and to be on the agenda for these early starts in a new community we're building, a bits and balm called Rio Plata. We've been granted early starts many times in every community, but I've never had to go before council for it. But since we are today, I thought it might be a good time to update you guys on how we're doing out there. Things are going quite well. We're continuing to be about 30% of all new home permits in the city of Mission are coming from Bits and Palm. And we've, this is, Rio Plata is, we're pretty excited about it. It's the first of our coved street communities, the curvy roads like we do at Trace Lagos. Really cool community. It's 132 lots, and our success is causing the reason to have to ask for early starts. We have 85 houses in backlog. That means that's either under construction or people waiting for us to start their homes, so, but there's 85 people waiting on homes at Bits and Palm right now. What we have out there right now at Rio Plata is, Clichy is compacted, there's water in the hydrants, it's perfectly safe to begin slabs. By the end of next week, it'll all be paved. So, we're just about two weeks ahead that we need to be able to go ahead and get those permits that we have in front of you approved, or in front of the building department approved. We will start about 100, a little over 100 houses out there this year. Next year, we're expecting to do about 130, so things are growing well. Across the street from this one, we're doing another community just below. I don't know if you can see it in your packet, but Cindero, just to the south of this community, and we're doing a 21-acre park, Cindero Park, included in that community, and we have a lot of good things happening out there. And I know I only had three minutes, but I appreciate your time and giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Council, I went ahead and called for item number 19. You are authorized for direction, so we can give direction to Mr. Rhodes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I recognize a motion for approval and a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Mr. Rhodes, your request has been approved. I will call back to the citizen participation for second person. There's a second person, Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor, I didn't have anyone else sign up, and I don't see anyone on the floor.
Okay, there being no other person, at this time, I'm going to close the citizen's participation, and I'm going to move to the public hearing and ask for the planning and zoning recommendations, and call for item number four, and I'm going to ask Ms. Luna to lead us in this item. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It empowers a request to abandon a 20-foot alley on the south side of Lot 10, block 157, Mission Regional Townsite, and on the north side of Lot 1, RO subdivision. The city of Mission holds public hearing on issues involving any abandonment of public right-ofways. Public notification procedures similar to rezonings have been activated. Notices were sent out to property owners within 200 feet radius plus a publication of such right-of-way abandonment. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of Perkins and West Homelandry. Staff recently received a request from Yanelli and Oscar De Leon and Oscar Cortez, which were the property owners requesting that we abandon this 20-foot alley. Since there is no utilities and it's not being used, staff does not object. The alley on the west side has already been abandoned. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance would be needed.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing on the request to abandon a 20-foot alley. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this issue or on the Zoom? Ms. Carrillo and Charlie? I will close this public hearing, and I'll redirect it to the council for your guidance. Council, you have the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries item number four, passage 4-0. And I'm calling for item number five. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Excuse me, Mayor. Ms. Luna requested an ordinance, so that would be ordinance 4968.
Let it, for the record, indicate that ordinance 4968 is going to be discussed under this public hearing. Go ahead, Ms. Luna. You have the floor.
Okay, item number five is a rezoning for a 1.374-acre tract of land, more or less out of the north 5 acres of the south 24.08 acres of Lot 30-1, west addition to share land. This is from agricultural to C3 general business. The applicant is Ace Engineering LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of Bashan Road and Inspiration along the east side of Inspiration Road. The future land use map shows low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. However, we've seen similar requests in other areas. The applicant is proposing to construct a Dollar General. Staff is seeking direction for this rezoning. PMZ recommended approval. Staff notes that two people call in favor of the request. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing for rezoning, and I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Do we have anybody in the audience? Do we have anybody on telecommunication? Since we don't have anybody addressing us, at this time, I will close the public hearing for the rezoning and ask for the guidance and seek direction from the council. Council, you have the floor.
We would like to make the approval based on the recommendation of the planning and zoning.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to go ahead and approve this recommendation for the rezoning, and I open it for discussion. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Are you wishing to vote on this one? Do I? On this one? Or do I classify it 4-0?
We are, I'm going to classify it as 4-0 for this item number five. Ms. Garza has arrived, and she chooses not to vote on it as a result because of lack of not knowing exactly what it is. Therefore, I'm going to call item number six, public hearing for rezoning. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number six is a rezoning for a 7.87-grown acre tract of land, more or less out of the south 10 acres of Lot 272 Johnny Sherry. This is from agricultural to R1A, which is large block, single-family. The applicant is RGV via Home LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of Glasscock Road and East 28th Street along the west side of Glasscock Road. The future land use map shows low-density residential. The proposed zone does comply with the future land use map and the surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval. PMZ also recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing for rezoning, and I'm opening it for any person that's in favor or against this rezoning.
Are we not going to see the presentation on the screen? Or is there nothing on the screen?
The question is, she's not going to be able to see the screen?
It was on there. Alex, can you go back to the presentation of that lot?
Oh.
That is showing the camera.
Yeah, we all saw it. Yeah, we were like wondering, are these things working or not? Oh, you didn't see it, Ms. Carrillo? No. Oh, fine. Take the rest. Or like touch your pants and stuff. But that was on button, man.
Alex.
You're welcome.
Back to the public hearing. Anybody in favor or against it? If not, I will ask from the, is anybody indicating in the telecommunication? I will close this public hearing, and we're adopting ordinance 4970, but I will ask the council for guidance.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item passes ordinance 4970, passage 5-0, and I'm calling for item number seven. Ms. Luna, you have the floor. Item passes ordinance forty-nine seventy, passes five oh, and I'm calling for item number seven. Ms. Luna, you have the, the floor.
Item number seven is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for La Fogata Restaurant. This is located three hundred feet north, uh, Sherry Road. It's Lot One, El Lugar subdivision. It's currently zone commercial. And the applicant is El Lugar Cabrito and State House. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The site is located a quarter mile north of Express eighty-three along the east side of Sherry Road. La Fogata is a family-oriented Mexican restaurant and bar that has been in operation since two thousand eight. The C U P was most recently approved by P N Z on October twenty-four, twenty-eighteen for a period of two years. The hours of operation are Sunday to Thursday from eight to ten, Friday and Saturday from eight to twelve. Parking, landscaping is all in, in compliance. Section one fifty-six dash three of the zoning code, of the zoning code requires that bar must be three hundred feet away from the nearest church, resident, or publicly owned property. There is one single-family residential home and several mobile homes within the three hundred foot requirement. Does council waive the separation requirement in the previous C U P approval? Staff is recommending approval, subject to a two-year approval, at which time the the C U P and the T A B C license will need to be renewed. Waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirements from residential areas and must comply with building fire and health codes. P N Z and staff are recommending approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
I am opening the public hearing for the conditional use permit renewal. Anybody in the audience or telecommunications that would like to speak in favor or against this, uh, conditional use permit renewal? I will close the public hearing, and I will, uh, ask for the council's, uh, direction.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries ordinance forty-nine seventy-one is approved with a five oh. And I'm calling for item number eight. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number eight is a conditional use permit renewal for a mobile, mobile food truck, El Sancho Barbecue, located at sixteen-twenty-five North Conway Avenue, being the north half of Lot Thirteen and all of Lot Fourteen, Block Two Fifty-eight Mission original townsite. It's currently zone C-three, and the applicant is Daniel Sanchez. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located on the four hundred, actually located four hundred feet north of Quica de la Gasa Loop along the west side of Conway Avenue. The primary business is Jitters Coffee Bar. This C U P was most recently approved by P N Z on November thirteen, twenty-nineteen for a period of one year. The applicant desires a C U P renewal to continue the use of the food trucks. The hour operations are Monday to Friday from seven to ten, Saturday from eight to ten, and Sunday from eight to seven. Parking, landscaping is all in compliance. El Sancho Barbecue have been operating at this location without any issues. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, and they must comply with fire and health requirements. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
I am opening the public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal. Anybody from the audience that is in favor or against this request or telecommunications? I am closing this public hearing, and I'm going to ask the council for, for some guidance.
I'm going to give El Sancho approval for the conditional use permit renewal.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries ordinance forty-nine seventy-two is approved, five zero. And that, uh, finishes our public hearings, and I'm moving to consent agenda items. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as, as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meetings Act. And this is open for consent agenda items.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda items that consist of item nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
In this, I open it for discussion. Is there any item that any of the council member wants to pull out? And if no, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries all consented items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Passed with a five oh. And there's, okay. And I'll move to approvals and authorization, and I'm calling for agenda item number seventeen. And I'm asking Ms. Luna, you have the floor, ma'am.
Item number seventeen is a preliminary plot approval, preliminary and final plot approval for La Homa Crossing subdivision phase two. This is a thirty-two-point-seventy-three acre tract of land, being portions out of Lot Seventy-five, Seventy-six, Seventy-seven, Seventy-eight, Seventy-nine, Block Two, La Homa Ranch City, Spoke Unit Number One subdivision. This is in our E T J. Developer is Red Rock Real Estate Development Group, L T D, and the engineer is Quintania Hetley and Associates. The proposed subdivision is at the northeast corner of La Homa Road and West Mile Seven Road. The developer is proposing twenty-seven single-family residential lots. Water, sewer, and drainage are needing code. The city engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, carrying with the street, complying with the street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
What is the wishes of the council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I, we have a second, and this is open for discussion. Go ahead, ma'am.
I have a question. Just, uh, what are the sizes of the lots? Approximate.
They measure
Okay, go to the, there you go.
Two hundred and twenty by They vary from one-twenty to two-twenty on length on some of them.
But, um, are they, they look like they're well over half an acre. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, um, almost an acre even.
Yes, some are larger than.
Okay, they could have been smaller, I guess, but they chose not to. All right. Thank you.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item seventeen is approved, five oh, and calling for item number eighteen. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number eighteen is a preliminary and final plot approval for Hillcrest Valley subdivision, also known as Davila State. This is a six-point-two-nine-nine acre tract of land out of Lot Five, Miller Brothers Nursery re-subdivision. It's currently zone R-one, single-family residential. Developer is Norma Davila, and the engineer is Rodriguez Engineering. The proposed subdivision is located near the West Two Mile Road and Hillcrest Drive intersection. The developer is proposing twenty-two single-family residential lots, all exceeding area requirements for, for an R-one lot. Water, sewer, and drainage are all meeting codes. City engineer has approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval, subject to they must meet the model subdivision rules, comply with the street alignment policy, and pay the capital sewer recovery fees. This item is now before you.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
There are more to approve, uh, based on all of the requirements that they have.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for discussion.
I'm just, I've never seen an also known as Davila Estates.
We, what they did is, it, Davila State was recently approved in October by the council. What they decided to do before recording, they wanted to change the name. Everything is already in existence, so we have to take that subdivision again to the planning and zoning and to the council with a new name.
Okay, so the, the legal description will be
The legal description will still be the same, but you've, it was approved before as Davila Estates. Now, the new name that how it's going to be reported is under Hillcrest Valley subdivision.
And not also known as?
No, no, just so you, so it, it's also
You're not going to put the AKA?
No, it's just going to be Hillcrest Valley subdivision. It was previously approved, actually at the last October meeting, it was approved as Davila Estates. But then before recording it, the owner wanted to change the name, so that's why we're here today.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number eighteen is approved, five oh. And, uh, as you know, item number nineteen is already approved, so we'll move into item number twenty. And Mr. Perez, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, yes, uh.
Was that approved before I got here?
Yes, ma'am, uh, it was called, um, yes, Mr. Rhodes had a
Okay, so are we going to not authorize any certificates of?
Yes, that's correct. As long as there's no occupancy prior to it being recorded, yes, correct.
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item twenty is a consideration uh, for city offices to close on Wednesday, November twenty-fifth. A consideration being requested to close, um, city offices on Wednesday. Currently, our, our holiday schedule is half a day Wednesday, uh, full day Thursday and Friday due to the, uh, Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, we are asking consideration to close. Uh, we will have, uh, staff on call if it, it is approved. Um, currently, we are scheduled to work half a day Wednesday. Um, if, if there's a need for, for any services, we are, uh, available on call. Um, also, there is, uh, I, I did check with the departments. There is no, uh, for example, solicitations due on Wednesday. There, the inspections on the planning department will be scheduled Tuesday late uh, for Wednesday, um, and then also with the, the rest of the departments that will be on call will be available, uh, as needed.
I want to add to that, that I was the one that, that came to Mr. Perez and told him that, uh, due to the fact that that the COVID-nineteen incidents are in a rise in the Dell County and here in the Mission, that I felt that it may be an idea that the council might be able to, to entertain, uh, closing down the, for half a day as a result of, so we could have, uh, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, uh, kind of like no contact with, with, with our citizens, and yet not cut services, you know, as far as, uh, and that's why the, the, the emergency response teams are going to be on, on standby. But at the same time, hopefully, we can begin to use as a strategy to, to curb, uh, our, uh, our spike that's happening out there in that community at this time.
More to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Mo- motion carries the five oh, uh, item for number twenty. And I'm calling for item number twenty-one, and, uh, Mr. Dominguez, chief, do you have the floor?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item twenty-one is authorization to purchase pager holsters and related equipment via toll booth vendor. The total amount of the expenditure is sixteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eight, eighty-two cents. The equipment will be purchased for the use of our state forfeiture drug account funds. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this purchase.
I'm going for approval.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, uh, approved item number twenty-one. This is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number twenty-one, chief, is approved, five oh, and I'm calling for item number twenty-two. And chief, you have the floor.
Item twenty-two is approval of an ordinance providing for a four-way stop intersection at Los Indios Road and Santa Teresa Street by Ruben Inojosa Elementary. On November seventeen, twenty-twenty, the Traffic Safety Committee reviewed the concerns and recommendation, recommended the placing of four-way stop intersections. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance forty-nine seventy-three is approved, chief, and I'm calling for item number twenty-three, and chief, you have the floor.
Item twenty-three is approval of an ordinance providing for a no parking zone at any time on the east and west side of the two, to the five-hundred block of South Corner Road, commencing an interstate, uh, highway to Front Road in Pasadena North, uh, six hundred and forty-five feet. On November seventeen, twenty-twenty, the Traffic Safety Committee met and recommended a no parking zone due to complaints of tractor-trader parking on both sides of the roadway. Staff and city manager are requesting approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance forty-nine seventy-four is approved, chief, five oh, and I'm calling for item number twenty-four. Mr. Flores, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, um, this will be resolution, resolution number seventeen hundred, authorizing professional services with the Texas Coalition of Affordable Power Incorporated, also known as T cap, to negotiate, to negotiate an extension of the current electrical supply contract. So now there's a new business model out there that, uh, will allow us to take advantage of the fluctuating markets. So currently, we've, we've seen, uh, those three- and four-year, uh, agreements. However, um, it's been recommended that, that we look at, uh, the next, uh, the next contract, uh, year, um, coming up in twenty-twenty-three. So we would be able to take advantage of the, uh, of the fluctuating markets and save us a, a, a lot of money. However, if we get to a, a point, uh, this year from now, and it doesn't look like it's going to be advantageous for us, we can revert back to the multi-year agreement. So staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries resolution seventeen hundred is approved, five oh, Mr. Flores, and I'm calling for item number twenty-five, and Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. For item twenty-five, staff is recommending approval of a partial amnesty program to waive interest, penalty fees, and administrative costs on mowing charges paid in full during the program, which will commence on December first, twenty-twenty, and end on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And this will be done through resolution. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries resolution number seventeen zero-one is approved, five oh, Ms. Bella, and I'm calling for item number twenty-six. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item twenty-six is the discussion of possible action of modifying COVID-nineteen city emission guidelines. Um, currently, we are, um, we do have our, our current guidelines in place. Um, I do want to, uh, bring up one particular event that was, uh, submitted. Now, our, our, the current order, uh, designates, uh, any outdoor events of, of ten or more to be approved by, uh, the mayor or the county commissioner, uh, county, um, county judge, yes, I'm sorry. And so one of the, uh, the requests that was submitted uh, to us, uh, that I want to bring to the council was there is a, a, um, an owner of a property that, that owns, it's a, it's a daycare here on Raglin and Business Eighty-three. Um, what, what they're requesting, um, that property is no longer a zone commercial, it's zone R-one, uh, T townhomes. And so what he's requesting, he wants to rent, uh, this particular, uh, location for a, a market type of venue. Um, but one of the things that is, uh, being requested is that it's, uh, every weekend, starting, uh, this, this coming weekend. So it's every Saturday, uh, Friday and Saturday is what they're requesting, and so, um, I do want to, uh, bring this up to the council. Uh, keep in mind that it is not a commercial, uh, zone property, and this is, um, one of the requests that, that came. And so I wanted to, to bring this up, uh, um, for consideration for the council uh, in this particular item that was requested. However, it, it is, uh, um, you know, my, my recommendation is, is that it, considering it's not a commercial site, um, it is a, um, uh, rezone to R-one T, and then plus also they're wanting to do one every weekend, basically like an indoor market type of area. And so, uh, that's, that's one request on, on this particular item.
I'll, I'll open it for the council. Counsel? I'll, I'll open it for the council, council.
It's like an indoor, like a indoor garage sale type for different people to come in and then put their.
So, so the owner would rent spaces for individuals to come and, and basically set up a type of a market, uh, setting. Uh, but, uh, does, they, they did submit dates, and, and, and it has, starting November twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, December fifth, sixth, twelve thirteen, nineteen twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, January second, third, January ninth, tenth, January sixteen, seventeen, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and the thirtieth and the thirty-first.
That's what I was in there, what's the square footage?
You have a, a designer.
You have a.
Right.
And, and it's indoor, not outdoor? It's outdoor, right? It's outdoor, Randy.
Yeah.
Do we have a Google map of that? Cause I, I can't picture it.
You can't, you can't pull it up?
Oh.
When, when I met with them, my recommendation was that, uh, that, uh, each time that they came, that they want, wanted to do was to, to put the items on the agenda for the council, for the council, and, and that the city permit be issued, you know, uh, for, for, for the activity because, uh.
And that was my recommendation as well, Mayor.
You know, and, uh, and, uh, I don't know, but I didn't know whether we had the authority to ask them to do the city permits. Uh, you know, it doesn't have to be like, uh, they would come to the first city council meeting for the, for the month of, for that, for that month, and then, a- as, as we see how, how, uh, how they're functioning and working, you know, and you know, uh, as far as that is concerned, then we'll, we'll be able to say.
There was an exception to the ordinance, Mayor, the ordinance, uh, once you rezoned, you can't then go back to using it as commercial, but the exception is that you can have it for, uh, events, but those events are one-time events, which, which, like you said, you must bring to the council one at a time, not lay out dates for the next five or six months.
Mayor, I would like to care what this item, until we get all the information, I mean, uh, you said it was indoor, you say it's outdoor. I mean, I don't know how big the facility is, I would.
In my conversation with them, there was no, no discussion of an indoor activity. Was outdoor, but it, I don't, I don't know what he's, he's reading or what he's saying.
Yeah, no, it's just, uh.
And, uh, and, and, and Miss, uh, Deluna was in the meeting also with me when, when we, when we met, and all of it was outdoor, outdoors.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to not, uh, move many, um, due to the COVID, a lot of events where it takes, and we even canceled some of our events as a city.
Yes.
I mean, so I would wanna be careful to approve anything for each, where you're gonna try to gather more than ten fifteen people, so I would like to give more information, or I make an educated decision on this matter.
Yeah, I'd like to see like a little site plan of the, the different, uh, areas that he would want to rent, and then where, where's, obviously you're gonna use the parking space, right, for that, so where's, where's the parking area gonna be?
Yes.
And how, how are they gonna limit the number of people that comes in, how, what's their plan with that? And so, so you're aligned with, with them coming in for a city permit and, and putting on the agenda with, with the expected, uh, site plans and, and, you know, and, uh, and, and, and then, uh, we can, we can, uh, discuss them, um. You know, I think, I think that would, is that okay?
Yeah.
There's a motion to table, Mayor, do you wanna pursue that?
I don't, I don't remember, refresh my memory, I don't remember entertaining the motion for it. Or just the opener for discussion, am I?
No, Randy was just discussing.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did, did I entertain the motion?
No, Mr. Plata had moved to table, but that's why I said if you wanna pursue it.
Motion because it's, you know, it, it can be handled through Mr. Perez's office.
Yes.
That's why I didn't recognize his motion, so.
Understood, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Randy, so can you just, uh, uh, again, what are, what are the requirements right now for, um, our requirements for this COVID? Looking to requirements.
Yes, um, our, our current city facilities, um, are, are still closed, um, by appointment only. Um, we are ever, asking everyone, uh, I mean, we, we are open by appointment only, I should say. Um, we are asking, we, we do require everyone to wear a face covering, um, as, as come in, and we do have temperature checks at, uh, our facilities. We, we currently provide, uh, curb site services for our utility building, our library, uh, museum, those, uh, those, um, are, are currently operating in that, in that, uh, manner. Uh, right now, uh, City Hall is, is, uh, we, we, uh, do, um, birth certificate, death certificates, uh, through the window up front, we created a window where a citizen doesn't necessarily need to come inside the building. Um, uh, we're, we're currently doing that. Uh, full, full drive-through on utility side, planning also by appointment, they have a, a separate door to come in um, as well for, for planning. Um, every, everything else, um, parks are still, uh, closed, the playground equipment is still closed. Uh, we, we do have restroom facilities that are open. Um, and our, um, tennis centers are, are open. Uh, restrooms are sanitized, um, uh, several times a day, uh, the ones that are open in the parks. Um, and we, that's, that's what we have currently right now.
And as far as, uh, wearing a mask that, that is in place?
Yes, ma'am.
We're out, I mean, in, in public, right?
Yes, uh, that, the current order is a mandatory mask when, in public areas, yes. Um, you know, restaurants.
And I would like for the council maybe to, to, uh, to put into the form of a motion that, that, that mandatory, mandatory face masks are in the public area required. And, and, and at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to do that.
Mayor, also just before we do that, and just, uh, what, what about the curfews, or, or do we have a curfew in place at this time?
The curfew, uh, curfew, I do not believe that is, is in place, um, due to governor and, and county orders.
But we can do mission orders, you know, we can do mission orders, and I, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm with you that, uh, if anything else, maybe not at ten, at ten P M., but at least at twelve midnight, uh, twelve midnight to five thirty, create that curfew for, for the city, and, uh, you know, is, is that good enough, uh, council? You know, so, you know, so, so at least we can, uh, we can communicate to the public that non-essential persons go to, go to bed by twelve midnight.
Sure.
You know, and, and, uh, and because the majority of, now, at one time, when we started with COVID nineteen, it was only the, the sixty and older, you know, but now even infants are, are being affected, and families are being infected and so forth, so. So, so, uh, uh, I, I would like to add that to the.
Okay.
To the category, so we, we, when we enter the motion, but we do need to let everybody know that facial masks are required mandatory in the city mission in the public areas.
Mayor, I can draft it for, and you can sign tomorrow, and i- if you wanna publish it on Friday in the progress.
Yeah. So you need a motion, well, right now, we, uh, he needs to, all the items, so we can put all the items into one motion.
Yes.
You know.
Yes. Uh, another, another one that, uh, that for consideration is, is the continuation of garage sales. Um, that's one of the things that also, uh, we've been issuing quite a, quite a few garage sales. Uh, we have had, um, uh, employees go out and enforce the face covering, we have had some garage sales shut down because of non-compliance, and so we're currently.
I think we need to add, we need to add for the next, uh, uh, the next month that we shut down the garage sale, because I know I've passed through several of the garage sales, and I've seen people that have been leaving the garage sales, and, and, uh, there's no sign that they're wearing a mask either, so, you know, and I, I just don't wanna stop there and let them know, right, but, uh, but I think that we need to suspend them until at least to the, to the end of the year, you know, the, so, so people can understand that when we give them an opportunity for them to to open up, that, 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 we want them to adhere to CDC. It's a life safety measure, that's all we're asking, it's a life safety measure.
Yes, uh, we're, uh, uh, the month of October, we.
Is it okay?
Yes, correct.
Yes, the, the month of October, we issued about two hundred and eighty, um, garage sale permits. Uh, we're, November, we're at a one eighty-three already, so, uh, we're gonna possibly surpass, uh, but, uh, that's another consideration.
Yes, so, so let's do, let's do the effective December the first.
Okay.
You know, uh, to, to, to the next city council meeting, ma- meeting in January, you know, and then we bring it back under the same, same agenda item, and, and we go forward.
Okay.
Um, what other items?
And the, the rest, sir, uh, we do have, I, I do wanna, um, advise the council, uh, we do have a joint, uh, meeting with the Texas Citrus Fiesta on December the first. Uh, it's gonna be on Zoom, uh, uh, at six thirty, and we'll send out the information. Um, if you, I passed out a sheet of events, uh, most of those events are related to, uh, Texas Citrus Fiesta for the upcoming months. Um, the, the month of, of December and the month of January, and so, uh, we will have uh, discussion on, on some of those, uh, events moving forward, um, at that meeting, so we can get consensus from the council and uh, from the Texas Citrus Fiesta. Um, that, that's all I have for an answer at this point.
Any of the other council members want to add any other indicators to the motion? That has to do with, uh, COVID nineteen life safety measures? At this time, I will entertain the motion, Mr. Plata, you had a.
Yes.
Mr. Plata has been recognizing it as a motion to, um, and I'm gonna open for a second.
Second.
We have a second, and then I'm gonna open it for final discussion, uh, to make it very clear, the indicators that, uh, that, uh, that we're going to be asking for to include the, the curfew and face mask covering, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and it passes five oh.
Thank you.
I will call for item number twenty-seven.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Authorization to purchase thirteen hundred residential refuse carts, purchased from Cascade Engineering Incorporated via H G A C, buy board contract R C zero-one dash eighteen, at a cost of fifty-nine thousand sixty-five. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Uh, pardon, pardon my ignorance, but what is it, residential refuse carts?
Those are the trash containers at your home.
So, the.
It's a fancy word to trash.
It's a fancy word for trash.
It's an industrial word.
Thank, thank you for educating me. I, I'll open it for a motion, Mr. Plata, you have the floor. So you have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All, all same sign, motion carries, five oh, is number twenty-seven, Mr. Villal. I'm calling for item number twenty-eight, and I'm asking Mr. Valmaris.
Good, good evening, Mayor and City Council, item number twenty-eight, seeking authorization to execute agreement with SINTA for rental of city admission employee uniforms via U S Community Omni Partner Cooperative Contract Number R dash B B dash nineteen zero zero two. Departments include parks and recreation, meter readers, sanitation, public works facilities, veteran cemetery and golf course, uniforms, replacement and wash service will be provided under the contract. Rental of uniforms will be on an as-needed basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Uh, we have a motion to, to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, and this is open up for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item twenty-eight is approved five oh, Mr. Valmaris, and calling for item number twenty-nine, Mr. Silva, you have the.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, item twenty-nine is seeking authorization toward contract for grant administrative services. I'm asking that the council take no action on this item, impending some information, uh, that I requested from the Economic Development Administration. So until I get that information, I, I would like to take no action.
Okay, no action, no, not to be tabled, but you want no action, so I'll skip twenty-nine and call for number thirty, Mr. Silva, you have it.
Yes, thirty is seeking authorization to engage the most qualified engineer for the Sherry Village Industrial Park roadway and drainage improvements mission and infrastructure project, uh, and I'm asking the same thing for the council to take no action, pending, uh, response from E D A.
Okay, therefore, I'm gonna skip number thirty for no action. And thank you, Mr. Silva, for the information, and and, and we're gonna move over to unfinished business, uh, item number thirty-one, do we wanna address item thirty-one, or?
Mayor.
As, and on table.
On item thirty-one, I'm, I'm gonna recommend that, uh, you, you can either table it one more time or take no action, there was not notice given within a ten-day period of this tabled item from the last meeting, so I'm gonna recommend, uh.
So, so I'm, I'll entertain the motion to untable the, the item number thirty-one, do I hear a motion?
Was that the recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah, it's two.
Table it, so we can retable it if not.
We need to retable it for December fourteen, yeah.
Want to untable the item?
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, now I will entertain the motion to table. Yes, and do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item thirty-one is tabled, Mr. Plata. Call for item number thirty-two, do the same thing.
The same thi- the same thing, Mayor.
You have, you motioned to what?
To untable, and then, uh, you can either table it again or, or take action on the, on the evaluations that were submitted.
Okay.
You had called for Mr. Plata and Ms. Ortega to be involved in the committee. Uh, the evaluations were sent out to them, but they weren't received back in time, so we can either just move forward with the committee's, uh, recommendation, or table it one more time.
Okay. Do I have a motion to untable, Mr. Plata?
I'm going to untable.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, uh, motion carries, it is on table, item is now for discussion. Open it for discussion. Any.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the, um, the council to Perez, um, labor firm. I know Mr. Perez with many years of experience in the bonding on the bonds and public entities. He's also somebody from our community, so.
Before I entertain the motion, uh, uh, on the discussion, I, I would like to have some more discussion, because, uh, my understanding that he was, uh, evaluated, and, Mr. Valmaris, uh, was he evaluated, or, and, and what number did he fall under, under the ranking?
According to the evaluation and the ranking, they, they came third from the other two that had already been evaluated.
So we're bypassing number one and number two, uh, on the ranking, now, before, before the discussion, Mr. Perez, I mean, Mr. Uh, uh, Plata, is the, do you want for us to, to table it, so you and his, uh, or, or they are convenient to the review of the three, of the three, uh, uh, proposals that were submitted? Or, or do you wanna take action on it, and, uh, I'm opening it for discussion, remember, this is a discussion, go ahead and discuss.
Mayor, my understanding was that, that this firm was not evaluated, because he was, he didn't qualify, because he was, uh, basically, um.
He was deemed non-res, he, uh, yes, he was deemed non-responsive, uh, by purchasing, and as both myself. At the last meeting, there was a motion to allow him to be considered, uh, so we did, and he was ranked third.
And he was ranked third.
So then, okay, so then the committee reconvened and, and did rank him.
Yeah.
That is correct.
And, and that, those items are, are, do we have that in the package?
No, no, you don't, uh, we, uh, we received the final, uh, evaluations of, uh, Perez Law Firm on Friday, so we were still reviewing the, the evaluation outcome, and we're gonna tally them up.
So we're not ready for it.
But they, they are, they, based on the preliminary rankings, they are coming in at, at third.
So do you recommend that, uh, that we, we table and wait?
I do recommend that we table and wait, uh, but I do definitely invite for council if they wanna take part in the evaluation of, of their qualifications.
Why, why don't we do that, why don't we, why don't we table it, uh, in, in, uh, from now to the next city council meeting, which is December the fourteenth, we can ask the two council members that I've asked to be placed in all the procurement, not only on this one, but in all the other procurements, that, to include M A D C, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, projects, and any project that comes through the council, that I want those two, two, uh, council members to be up, up front, and.
And also, Mayor, if the proposal is open, we have a no-contact clause. The council member, if, in, if they are involved in, in evaluations, cannot have contact with the vendor.
Yes.
If they do, the vendor is disqualified.
I was gonna say, if the, if whoever makes the initial, initial.
It doesn't matter who contacted who, if contact is made, the vendor is disqualified.
That is correct.
Okay, so, at this time, I'd like to, they, entertain a motion to table.
Motion to.
Motion to table, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and, uh, item number thirty-two is, is, uh, is tabled for, for the next city council meeting. On routine matters, the city manager comments, and the, the floor, Mr. Perez.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, do wanna thank the mayor and the council for, um, the.
um, the allowing the employees to be off uh, or have city offices closed on Wednesday. Um, that would be uh definitely appreciated by the employees to spend time with their family. Um, thank you for that. Also, I do wanna share that uh we did receive our two brand new apparatus, fire apparatus, uh, an aerial ladder truck, seventy five foot and a a pumper that will be, uh, one will be stationed at um, at Central Fire Station and one at at Station Three. That's definitely an um, um, a a big improvement for our fleet and for our employees, uh, our firefighters to have those resources. So thank you uh for that opportunity. And again, I also just wanna uh wish everyone a happy uh Thanksgiving and a safe uh Thanksgiving as as they spend time with their families if they choose to. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Perez. Uh, I'm gonna move over to Mayor's comment. I I actually just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, not only to all the city employees, but all those city employees, families and all the citizens of mission. We wanna, there is a lot of reason to be thankful for in mission, you know, uh, uh, and and Thursday, when you get together, uh, ten or less, you know, in your, in your Thanksgiving uh ceremony that for the thank that the city of mission exists and that the citizens of mission are moving forward this city together as a team. And without further ado, I'm gonna ask the city council comments, and we're gonna start with Mr. Mr. Vela. You have the floor.
Okay, just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe.
Ms. Garcia, you have the floor.
I'm just doing the same thing. I wanna wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, restful and very safe Thanksgiving.
Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
Same here, wishing everybody happy Thanksgiving and be safe. Bless you.
Ms. Ortega, you have the floor, ma'am.
The same, Mayor. Thank you. Um, happy Thanksgiving for everybody, and if anybody has a recipe they'd like to share, I'm uh, I'd like to cook something new and different, so hopefully everybody has a great holiday and rest with your family.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega, and this I call for executive session pursuant to V T C A Government Code Section fifty five point zero zero one. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Some move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, are we going to the conference room yesterday in the community?
I will entertain a motion to come from executive session pursuant to BTCA government code section 55.001.
I move.
We have a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for the record 5:00. I will call for item number 33, consultation with the attorney, section 55.07. Mr. Gus Martinez, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, we have three items there. Item number eight requires a motion to authorize city manager to accept settlement and grant available cemetery plot to Vicente Hernandez as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
Tell me.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item A passes 5:00. Mr. Martinez, you have item B.
Yes, sir. Item B, mayor, requires a motion to delay adoption of fire department SOP pending final review and consultation with the city attorney's office and the formation of a non-council collaborative committee for fire department and police department as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
I move.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B passes 5:00. And I'll call for item C. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Item C requires a motion to authorize mayor and city manager to research availability and possible purchase of water rights as discussed in executive session.
I move.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C passes 5:00 and I'm calling for adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
Adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries by 5:00.